I call the meeting to order and I need you to stand by. I need Chris.
You're on.
I can stop now.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to call. We have a clock of business, but I know important things, priorities. So today is Monday, June 17th, and we are in the media center at LHS. And this is a regular school meeting. And if everyone can please rise and say "Pleasure" to the flag.
Pleasure to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How do you get off at your car? Okay, our school committee statement is this committee represents the needs of all Leamester Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leamester. Having gone over that, we're about to proceed with our open forum. I just want to remind folks that if anybody is planning on videotaping or recording any portion of this meeting, please identify yourself ahead of time, please. Having said that, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. And one last final time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. Having no one in the audience wishing to address the committee, we will move along to our communications superintendent. There are no communications this evening? Great, then we'll move right on to your superintendent's report. So, good evening. Today, first day of no school, and just when you think you're done, you've just begun. So today was full of business and planning here. All district administration collaborated on the development of the five-year strategic plan in hopes to set it in place for July 1st. We're hoping to use this tool for our decision-making process, and in attendance were all principals, assistant principals, special education coordinators, the nurse leaders, as well as district staff. Highly focused and very effective. I also want to acknowledge that I will not be attending tomorrow evening's city council finance meeting to address three items on their agenda: E-rate, transportation, and an appropriation from excess and deficiency account. We provided documentation backup for each of these requests, and our attendance is not necessary, but we are assured that we are still invited. Love to have us there if you want to. Six o'clock meeting, Michael, you'll be there, of course?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I want to make sure anyone needing to sign up for summer programming, academic, theater, sport, whatever it should be, please do so as soon as possible. Our schools will be full throughout the summer, and there's an acknowledgement from our food service. We will be serving free breakfast and free lunch at Leamester High School from July 1st through August 8th. Breakfast will be at 7:30 to 8:30, lunch is 11:30 to 12:30. That's Monday through Thursday. Any child 18 or younger, truly, any child. So even non-school-age children? 18 or younger. This is remarkable for the children of Leamester, and I want to thank the food service team for this important initiative. So please take advantage of this. Again, it's July 1st through August 8th, Monday through Thursday. And I do believe the, and correct me if I'm wrong, you might notice, I believe the library is also offering free lunch to any child 18 and under as well throughout the summer. So there's a couple of avenues for any family that needs the extra support. We have both of those options available for families. Yes, so please take advantage of it. Please take advantage of it. Thank you. Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go on to LHS' presentation. Steve?
I'm birthday.
Oh, it's your birthday?
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say these balloons were my idea, but they weren't. I'm here today. I'm a little nervous about the free breakfast and lunch. I'd be 700 pounds when I come back in September.
Steve, it said 18 and under. And you just had a birthday, so we're pretty sure you're over 18.
I pointed that out on TV. We did have a PowerPoint, but we said we moved it, so it's just going to be a quick presentation. First of all, I want to thank for the opportunity to come and kind of debrief on what the year was this year. With a large number of first-year people, not only in the district, but specifically at the high school, with a first-year principal, first-year assistant principal, first-year athletic director, first-year special education coordinator, and some first-year faculty members, we entered the building like freshmen, anxious, eager, and excited. And so these are some of the highlights. We feel we really had a great year, to be honest with you. Our academic highlights are a continued emphasis on increasing the enrollment for honors level in AP courses. With that comes a little bit of trepidation regarding our overall scores. We have made a decision that we would much prefer enrollment, obviously with great scores, but we would prefer more students taking the AP courses and worry about those scores as we look forward. An increased daily attendance, our attendance this year, I think across the district went up. I know it went up at Leamester High School, and that was one of our points of emphasis. It's not where it needs to be, but we're moving in that direction. Our high graduation rate and low dropout rate continued, and I would like to personally thank Steve McCahey and Alternative Education Program with edgenuity, which you people support, as one of our main reasons for that. Our increased support for all students, additional full-time student and teacher, rather, and tutor in our academic support center, something we implemented a year ago, really increased it this year with a tutor in there, and I'm really hoping it pays some benefits when we get our MCAS scores back. It was originally simply math, additional math, but it grew to, it has kind of morphed into something that's much larger than we had planned on, but Tracy Perkins is in there and works magic with people. All ELA and Math, MCAS exams this year for the MCAS were online, and we pulled it off thanks to the help of Steve Mamonie. I could not get more support from Mr. Mamonie or from Michelle Oliveri, who quite frankly ran it up here at the high school, and it was flawless. Biology is not online yet, and as Michelle said to me, although it was, you know, we had a lot of fears with the online piece, it's much easier to do it online than the booklets that are coming in, and so we're hoping that biology goes that way. We have an increased number of students enrolled in dual enrollment classes, and one of our big announcements is that last Thursday, Thursday or Friday?
He's looking to...
Was it last Thursday? Okay.
All right, I'm writing it down.
Well, the superintendent was here at Skyview's graduation. I was at Bunker Hill Community College with the principal from Sizer, Gardner, and Fitchburg, and the announcement came down that through the work, and I'm going to give the credit to Fitchburg State University and Mount Wanchuson Community College and their employees there that have put forth over two years of planning to get a partnership for some dual enrollment. Governor Baker was there. He fully supports it, what these pathways that, right now, we already have a healthcare pathways. We're including a liberal arts pathways and hoping to add business in the future. What that does is beyond allowing our students to take dual enrollment courses and graduate from Leamester High School with upwards of 12 to 15, 18 college credits, free of charge. It also allows, if we designate, and it happens sophomore year, if you agree to make a commitment to take at least four dual enrollment classes, and we designate that on our SIMS data, the state will give us $1,000 more per kid. So I told them that we have 475 freshmen, they'll all be making activities. So that's where we're at with that. It is, I did want to present this to superintendent tonight? That's all right?
Thank you. I'll come to you. Pass the balloons.
Yep.
We received that last week.
It's a statewide program, and a lot of the urban schools have partnered with, hey, we'll up with North Shore Community College, I believe. Westfield State has partnered with Westfield, Ole Miss, and Springfield, so we were very fortunate. It's the first time that we went in as four schools. Usually the schools just partner with one high school, but we went in, that's kind of what the holdup was. So Fitchburg State University and the Mount Wanchuson Community College really should be commended for their work for this. Our extracurricular highlights this year, our full-day homecoming was a hit last fall. We're going to expand it this year. We're talking about a parade from downtown leading up prior to the football game and marching up. Yeah, we're going to try and just, Coach Bellazzi won't be here, I'll be happy with that. That's okay. Our mandatory pre-prom meeting for all parents, had District Attorney Joseph Early here. I asked for a visit, and they came for two days. What came out, we haven't got the formal report yet, but what came out of it was that Leamester High School, the kids want to be here, there's a positive atmosphere, the teachers want to be here, it's a safe place, and it's ready to take off. We've got a little bit of work to do on some curriculum alignment, we've got a little bit of work to do on vision of the graduate, but as I said to them, and they agreed, if it was the reverse, if we had great curriculum, great vision of the graduate, but people didn't want to be here, that would be more concerning. So I think we can handle what we have to handle and go forward on that. The district emphasis, led by Jen Monday, on socio-emotional learning this year. The MCAS in the state, instead of cohort, instead of subgroups, they identify the 25 challenge, 25 percent. We asked in October that every faculty member take one of those kids and champion them, check in with them, high-five them, ask how they're, just kind of touch base with them a little bit more than you already do with our regular, you know, everyday touching, getting in touch with kids. Graduation was, I got a call last Friday at about 4 o'clock from an uncle of a graduate who runs the senior center in the city of Quincy. He said to me, very partial to the city of Quincy, and very partial to Quincy High School, that was by far the best graduation I have ever been to. He said, I write a little motivational newsletter every month, I'd like to include Andres, the boy that walked across the stage. If you don't mind, can I do that? He said to me, I think I was good until your voice cracked. I said, that seems to be the consensus. Senior awards night, as you know, $247,725, followed by the undergraduate awards night a few nights later. I obviously wasn't there, my niece had graduated that night from Wanchuson, and I have to tell you, our graduation blew there, it's out of the wire. And I told everyone that. Our jazz band continues to impress, our marching band continues to impress, our theater department continues to impress, they competed well into the state finals this year for the first time in a long time. I think there's huge spirit in our attendance, not just from students, but from faculty who have jumped on board and realized that this is unfortunate, you know, it's good and bad, it's a 24-hour day for us. Athletics continue to be represented across the state, and the life skills continues to be our shiny gem here with our Special Olympics and Best Buddies prom that we hosted this year, and it's just great, and big PR in the newspaper. So as we came in as freshmen, there will be no sophomore slump, I can tell you that, we're ready to go. We think we've got the culture back, and it is time to now focus on our curriculum alignment and our academic piece and move everything forward. So that's where we are. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I just want to make a comment that graduation was fabulous. I was just really disappointed that our local paper could not do a story.
I don't know...
About that young man.
Mrs. Oleslaw, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't know if there's a staff issue over there. I can just tell you that we have called about senior awards night.
No, I know, I know. You and I talked about that.
And I have to tell you, the gentleman that we usually deal with has been phenomenal and comes right over. We've had articles all year on kids that are art program.
Right.
You know, they've been very, I don't know what the issue was, so I'm going to chalk it up, so maybe an issue. You're right, absolutely right.
The crowning thing should have been there. It was in, it was in the Worcester telegram. It was in the champion. Could not be in the local paper.
I have to tell you, the man from Quincy said on the way home, called Channel 5 and Channel 7 and said, here's a human interest story, you got to get on it.
I think their policy's been to all the schools, but I think just two photos of them. I think that's been their policy.
That's sad. That's sad.
Well, there's nobody left.
And there's still, there's, I mean...
Photographer, a couple of reporters.
To read about things happening in Lowell and Lawrence, I don't need to hear about that community, I want to hear about my community.
Well taken. Go ahead.
So I have a group of volunteers that would like to show up here prior to school opening to kind of spit the place up a little.
I think we have a summer program that's going to begin the spiffing up?
Right.
But we will gladly.
So...
It's very nice of you publicly donating some flowers to us, we appreciate that.
We want to do the, you know, well, we're part of the sidewalk program this year, we need to get rid of those stairs and do the sidewalks over the other side. So I think everything looks good, but we spent a lot of money here, and just the outside makes it a little bit of magic.
I agree with you. I agree, wholeheartedly.
And that way, when the school starts, which is like two weeks away, in the real world, right? It's going to zoom by, it'll look good.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That'll be great.
No trouble finding people to help us.
Thank you.
No, you just was walking by the little atrium area down there, that all those benches need to really be taken care of, because that looks a little more...
We really want to spruce that area up and make it kind of an outdoor space to host, you know, a jazz band night of a fundraiser where they would play and maybe get a one-night license. Ooh!
Why?
Look at that, it should have one-night license, could be fishing.
Anybody gives us a hot food, we can seal off the entrances.
Right.
Nobody goes anywhere.
But I'm also impressed with how the place looks today. I mean, it's extended, it looks beautiful.
So to be honest with you, with, we've got a lot going on here this summer, as you guys know, a lot has been moved up here, and we met with the custodians, and they started at CTE this morning at, you know, 6 o'clock, and start stripping the floors and let's go because there's not going to be much time here at the end when there's not activities.
They've been nonstop today.
Yeah.
Since we got here this morning, yeah. That's great. Well, job well done to you and all of your staff and faculty. It certainly has been a very positive year, so we appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Lots to be brought up. And happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. All right, so now we're into the superintendent's evaluation. So we have one, what happened is everybody was given evaluations, we had a subcommittee that compiled the evaluations that were submitted, and we've come up with one document. So I'm going to read that, and then if anybody wants to, you know, make any comments, that's fine afterwards. So standard one is instructional leadership, and overall she received an exemplary, I guess I should say there's proficient in exemplary, certainly needs improvement, but we left that off of our final tally, because that was not an area that was needed. So she received an exemplary overall for instructional leadership. The second standard was management and operations, and the superintendent exceeded an exemplary in that area as well. The third standard is family and community engagement, and she received an overall exemplary. And the fourth standard was professional culture, which she received a proficient. So her overall evaluation was exemplary. We have some comments that we sort of pulled from everyone's responses. Paula is well-respected by all stakeholders, a solid, she has a solid administrative team that she's formed, there's transparency, she's moving the bar forward, she's restored trust, she's an out-of-the-box thinker, she's a risk taker, she's focused on student success, on social-emotional learning, on fiscal and staff accountability. Paula's a team player. There's an acknowledgement for, an emphasis on family engagement, improving our financial system, she's very visible in school activities, she's commended for her weekly newsletter for communication, her attention to safety in our schools, passionate for education, the establishment of curriculum infrastructure, the focus on professional development, the LCE overhaul, new hiring process, realignment of existing staff, phone and email upgrades, and improved relationship with City Hall. Areas of continued attention that need continued attention is the relationship with City Hall. Even though our relationship is improved, it's an ongoing process and needs some continued work. Regular updates on capital projects, monitoring physical plant maintenance, improving the school website and calendar of events, and developing one financial tool to be used by all constituencies. So overall, very positive evaluation. We appreciate all your hard work, you have a very strong work ethic, you're here from sunup to half sundown, and you really make your presence known, and you really have, I think, brought the focus for the whole district on student achievement and really working together as a team and really partnering with, you know, all aspects of the community, whether it's community members, parents, students, teachers, staff. And, you know, we've appreciated and recognized all the hard work that you've put in over this year, and really getting us sort of back on track. We had lost, I think, some focus previously, and it's important that, I think, we're, you know, making gains in all areas, and we appreciate that and commend you for your work. So thank you. Thank you. Anything else you'd like to say? You can go around them this way, Mike, anything to add?
Have you said it all?
Dean?
The only thing I wanted to start, you had mentioned last meeting or previous one about what we've done well, but now it's time to do better, kind of thing. That, I think, should be the main focus for the school committee and the superintendent and everybody is to, okay, and I'm not sure, that's going to be a goal that's set by you because you know the data, this is where we want to be here, you know, next year or by December, and then, you know what I mean? So we all are pulling in the same direction. Not that there are any deficiencies, but I just think...
Specific measures.
Whatever those goals are, have to be, you know, one year, well, a couple of years, we sort of did the, you know, get every kid to read by, you know, third grade, that third grade level, and that was like a community focus, to get anybody to be thinking about it. That's changed now, you know, it's declined by nine, kids start reading it, you know, they start to start three at nine years old, so, so whatever they are, just so everyone's kind of pushing, the library, you know, businesses in town, everybody, but I think we just need an abbreviated message as to what those, what those issues or what those goals are, which don't have to be, really, like, doesn't have to look like this.
Right.
So whatever you think they are.
I think our strategic plan, once we push that out, you'll see. And that will really set the tone for the... We have that down to a one pager.
And I think, and I think the process, each time you had it, from what I heard, each of the steps of all those that came, it was pretty much the same outcome.
It was.
Yeah.
Great. Nona?
I just agree with everything that has been said, and it's always a pleasure working with you.
Sue?
Ditto, Paula. I appreciate working with you, and thank you for all your hard work in bringing us forward from a really tumultuous situation. You really stepped up, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Mel?
Everything's been said, other than I appreciate everything you've done for Leamester Public School System and everything you continue to do for us, and you're a great face for us.
Thank you. Cody?
As always, the job truly well done. Thank you for your continued hard work and dedication to this district. You know, the level of trust and transparency we see, not only between each other, but the community has really grown, and you deserve an immense amount of credit for that. Thank you.
Huh?
I agree with what Erin said, she's like a brother fresh here in the culture of public schools, you can't make any better of that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. And may I just say, I need to thank this team, the feedback that you give me consistently, and you actually allow me every once in a while to take a risk, and give me permission without consequence, which is important. So in order to move the district, we still have to take a few more risks, but I'm lucky to have the team around me that I do on every single level, and there's not a constituent in our party that wouldn't work together to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. So thank you for the feedback. I hope to continue working on the positive and pushing Leamester Public Schools forward. So again, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to the school committee self-evaluation. Nona, if you'd like to update us on that, please.
You've all received a copy of the tallies. I just want to point out that this was recommended to be done anonymous, so I had all of you send your surveys back to Chris. Chris sort of cut your names off and sent it all to me for me to tally. So if we can just quickly go through, what is, if you look at the each question, you'll see a bolded number, that's the response that people gave. Under governance, I received five responses back, and you can see that one person strongly agreed with the first statement of committee's policies are clear and up to date. One person agreed with it, two people disagreed with it, and one person didn't know. And I flagged that as something maybe we want to focus on. Anything that was agree or strongly agree, I didn't think we needed to focus on it. Anything that was disagree or don't know, I put it as a flag to, maybe we need to work upon it, talk about it a little bit, or whatever. And then the next one is number three. The committee regularly evaluates its progress relative to the goals and objectives that have been adopted. One person strongly agreed, three people disagreed, and one person didn't know. So again, I flagged that as we need to maybe work on that. And the next one, the same thing. The committee refrains from involvement in the administration of the school system. One person strongly agreed, two people agreed, and two people disagreed. Again, I flagged that. Going over to under operations, I had five responses, and the only one that I flagged there was the second one. New members receive introductory training and orientation when they join the committee. Three people strongly agreed, one person agreed, and one person disagreed. We may want to take a look and just maybe firm up how we greet a new arrival to our school committee and make them, no, make them feel comfortable and help them along their first year here. Under member relations, five people responded. I highlighted number three. Members respect the will of the majority and support decisions once they are made. One person strongly agreed, three people agreed, and one person disagreed. We might want to talk about that at some point. And the next one, members share pertinent information with each other to prevent surprises and promote informed decision-making. Four people agreed and one person disagreed. And then moving on to the next page, we're kind of doing front and back. Under committee and superintendent relationships, four people responded. Actually, there was no surprises there based on what we just heard under Mrs. Deacon's evaluation. It was either all were strongly agreeing or all agreeing, there was no one that had anything lower than agree. Under strategic planning and fiscal management, four people responded. The first one I flagged, which is a long-term strategic plan exists and is regularly reviewed. Two people agreed, two people disagreed. We need to talk about that, we need to work on that. And the second one, all constituencies of the school district are involved in the strategic planning process. One person strongly agreed, three people agreed, and the rest were all strongly agree or agree. Under community relations, four people responded. The first one, the committee has a public relations plan for the school system. One person strongly agreed and three people disagreed. I think we need to form a policy or revisit the policy we might have to make sure everybody's on the same page with it. The committee, the second one, the committee encourages the inclusion of community members as much decision-making as possible. One person strongly agreed, two people agreed, one person disagreed. And then under conduct of meetings, four people responded, and as you can see, we have up until the fifth question, the physical setting is conducive to productive discussion and decision-making. One person strongly agreed, two people agreed, and one person disagreed. So we might want to think about where we have our meetings and how that works. Are there any questions or comments or... Are there any questions or comments or?
I think that this is helpful because then it gives us a chance to figure out, you know, where our focus should be as a committee. And I think this is sort of a re, well, next year will definitely be a rebuilding year-
Right, yes.
Because we'll be getting new members, so it's good to keep those things, you know, in mind. And we've had a very active year just getting our whole system on track and now it's time to pay a little more attention to ourselves.
Yeah. I just would like to say that I think overall, any time that we're asked to evaluate something, whether it be the superintendent or our self-evaluation, that if we could all do it and so we have, so we have a fair assessment from everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. That would make sense. And there was many other, and you pointed out where the areas that we needed improvement, but there were lots of other areas that people felt-
That we were really good, yeah.
So, it was fairly balanced, I think.
Right. And Chris has-
Areas of his complaints that others wanted. Anybody have any comments or questions about the self-evaluation? Okay. Thank you, Nona, for compiling that. We appreciate it. So, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Any corrections, errors?
Yes.
Yeah, omissions?
On page two, under action items, number five, under the second motion, Michael spelt wrong. We needed A in that.
He has a couple of the ways of always distill it, just in case people recognize.
All over.
He's got an A there.
All right. Anything else?
I was going to use French class.
So, all those in favor?
What are your thoughts?
Opposed?
Look shocked tonight, Brian.
All right. We then have the policy subcommittee minutes of June 3rd. Can I have a motion to approve the policy subcommittee?
Approve the minutes in the policy subcommittee?
Yep. Second, please. Isabelle. All, any comments? All those in favor? Approved. And then last but not least, the finance subcommittee of minutes from June 3rd.
Policy approved, June 3rd, 2019, finance committee's approval of minutes.
I'll second. There were two small corrections, two, just type those in the minutes for the finance.
Okay.
Just item three, the first sentence, it should be financial reports, there should be an S. And on the second page, in the middle of item seven, says attended the recent city council meeting. That should be which, not what. And then that they were fine.
So, with those corrections, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Great, the motion carries. We're gonna move on to the finance subcommittee report.
So, finance subcommittee has, we met. There are a whole lot of end of the year things that are in flux. Transfers that are going to need to be made, but we're not in a position to make them yet. We have two appropriations pecking at city council. Of course, you can't do anything with that money until it's been formally voted on. It should happen Monday. And then details about specific bills.
There'll be a couple, just to add, there'll be a couple, there'll be $200,000 for the phone system. That's Lomester High School and May Gallagher and then the HVAC system. I think that was the one.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully, they'll take them under the suspension rule if not, but there'll be another, yeah, there'll be another meeting. Just as long as it goes through before the end of the year.
So, it seems to me that we're going to need to have another meeting to be able to formally vote on these things after we know sort of how the budget falls out.
So, on the assumption that that needs to happen this fiscal year and the finance committee meeting, the finance committee is already scheduled to meet on Thursday, June 27th. So, obviously, full committee meeting is up to you, but we're all gonna be here, so.
Okay. Can everybody make it on Thursday, June 27th for a regular school committee meeting? So, you would, okay, so you might be the only person, but we'll still have a core.
Yep.
So, we will, you'll have a finance subcommittee meeting first and then we'll have our regular school committee meeting.
As long as there are things to vote on, if not, then just-
Yes, then we can cancel it.
Have your finance committee meeting and-
Yeah.
Right, so I think, I mean, we, we're going to have to have a transfer from expenses to salary and wages because we're, we're short in salary and wages, we have extra expenses.
At the end of the year?
That requires a full school committee vote because it's crossing that salary and wages expenses boundary.
So, we should have, I guess, Chris, if you could post a regular school committee meeting at seven o'clock on that day and it should be an abbreviated meeting, I would imagine it'll be just focused on the budget issues at hand. That'd be an apple fee. Yes. Great. All right, anything else?
Anything?
That was it.
Oh, should we ask about transportation?
Sure.
So, we did send over to the city back in March, an estimate of remaining balance on transportation for this year of roughly $660,000. Since then, with extra homeless transportation, that leaves us, there's $64,000 left, which I believe was communicated to City Hall a week or so ago. Just, have you received that?
I haven't seen that.
Okay.
Just, end of the year stuff is everywhere. Everyone that has any kind of 10 cents left in their bank, in their account, trying to transfer, that'll take a little while.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you. All right, policy subcommittee?
We're gonna have a meeting until the 3rd.
Okay. We can maybe go right ahead and do the second reading of the booster club policy, since that's an action item?
Yep. I will make a motion to approve the second reading of the booster club policy. File KJAA.
Do I have a second? Ron? Okay, any comments, discussions? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So, the approval of transfers, do we, we don't have any tonight at this point?
We didn't have, we didn't feel we had enough details to-
To do that.
Give you something to approve that we can copy.
Okay, that's fine. I would prefer caution, so. All right, new and old business?
I have a couple of things.
Sure.
So, I think there's still some confusion about the pension. So, let me just, I think everything started off understandable and I got away from that. So, the pension system works, our payments work calendar year and not fiscal year. So, we're halfway through a calendar year. So, the bulk of our, I mean, all of our pension funds are invested for the most part. You invest them and that makes you money and that helps to fund the pension program. We won't know what our actual costs are until December. Then you have a pretty good idea. And I think people aren't understanding that we're on a calendar year rather than a fiscal year. So, what will happen is we'll have an actuary, we'll know exactly what our, what our investments have brought us. And in some cases, we've had months where, you know, stock market didn't do well or whatever and so dropped, but it generally will equal itself out. That's the way it's been. So, once we know that, then you'll have your actual cost in terms of what our direct payment is for current cost, for the pension system. You deduct that from what was appropriated and is sitting there in that pension fund of the line item. And that's what you have to spend, sort of like a free cash, one-time appropriation account. I just want to make sure everybody understands that part. So, we're not, I think the confusion was, even as I watched the council meeting, was that I think some people thought it was a calendar year, like, why don't we know what this amount is? Well, we won't know because it's a calendar year. Once you gather, once you have all the information, somewhere around December, we'll know. Then the committee will know what the difference is between actual cost and what the, what will be available to transfer, offer whatever costs.
But you must know that it's going to be less than what we-
We do, but all you need is two months bad and bad, I mean, all you need is the stock market to tank for two months, a month, two weeks, depending on where your stocks are. So, once you know what that is, you're around December, you should know. I mean, anything can happen. You're halfway through the year, not a full year. So, that's-
But wouldn't we know how many people that we would be funding pensions for? So, that should give us?
It's not that. It's our investments. It's, it's the money that we put and invest into stock. I mean, there's a company that we hire that invests our money. Now, hopefully, they make money. I mean, sometime, you know, if the stock market goes the other way or some funds go the other way, mutual fund, whatever it might be, that affects things. That's, nobody wants to make that prediction right now, but you'll know. So, you could have a bad first half and a really good second half that makes up for the bad half. We won't know that. I mean, that's, that's not anything you'll know now, but you'll know halfway through the year, which is, you know, we have-
It's not for us to plan things.
It is. It is, but it's a good thing because-
And I just have to make a comment. I, in my personal opinion, not anybody else's here, my personal opinion is I was very happy for every other department in this city to get what they budgeted, except the school system.
That's not true.
When, when, when you, when you sat here and voted to pass this budget and then you didn't do it-
Well, Nona, first of all-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too, because that's incorrect.
Well-
That, every department got cut. No, I don't, no, it got real cut. They, what they asked for and what they got were two different things. What you see there with recommended budget and what they got were totally different things. For instance, at the fire department, there were personnel that they asked for, they didn't get. Police department, same thing. DPW, same thing. They, they didn't get the help they need for, say, OSHA, so we're gonna have to give somebody a stipend to do that job. Recreation department, right down the line, everybody. Now, in May, of course, I support the budget and I explained it that night. I support the budget as a school committee member, but I don't have a clue at that point without the state numbers as to what they're actually gonna give us. We still don't know. So, I can support that as a school committee member and then it goes to the mayor's office. And then I have to, you know, somehow or another, make this budget work for everybody. And you know what, Nona? In other communities, and I went through every single other community, it's a combined effort to put the budget together. Only in Lomester is the mayor the villain when he can't provide for every penny. Framingham, Bill Ricker, Chelmsford, Wakefield, Lynnfield, I went through them all. I, I spent an entire weekend going through all these other budgets and making phone calls last week. Framingham, request for almost $200 million, they got $190 something. School after school, this shouldn't be that way. This should be a combined effort of doing the best that we possibly can. 2017, the year of the absolute disaster, $2 million over net school spending, yet there are people still out there saying, you know, the city doesn't spend, we barely meet net school spending. And these are, these are numbers the school department submitted to DESI. Last year, 1.4 million over net school spending, yet we, we got an original budget of net school spending. Well, we ended up with 1.4 million over and that doesn't count the other cost that came from free cash over to the school department that doesn't mean net school spending or transportation or those other things. So, not everybody got what they wanted. And you know, Nona, you can always propose a tax increase beyond 2.5 percent. 2.5 percent tax increase brings in about 1.9 million. You can always propose that. There is city council, you can go to the meetings and propose that we raise the taxes over 2.5 percent. That's an option. And I'll be honest with you, that is an option. And you might want to consider that as an option.
I don't think anybody wants to hear that when, when we, we made this huge thing of being zero funded in our pension.
But you're not gonna use that money for your budget, Nona. You're never gonna use that money, but you're gonna use it like free cash because you don't know what your investments are gonna be. You don't know what your actual cost is gonna be. You should celebrate. There's gonna be money there that we can use to put backwards to schools. And it's, and, and it's not, it's, it would've gone to pension, now it's gonna actually go to money that you can spend on our schools. That's a thing to celebrate. There is no other school system in the state doing that this year. They're all trying to make up. They're borrowing money to pay their current cost for their pension. So, we're doing pretty good. We're doing pretty well.
And I'm probably the world record, Ron.
Where does this lead the school district in terms of cuts? That's what I want to know.
Cuts from what, Ron? Explain yourself if you could, please.
You just talked. You just said that some money is not gonna be able to come.
What's that?
That means some monies are not gonna be available.
I think that's not what I said.
We're facing budget cuts.
That's not what I said. What budgets are you referring to?
The school budget.
Is there anybody getting laid off that works here now?
I don't know. That's why I'm asking you.
Ask the superintendent. Does anybody that works here right now that's getting laid off?
Not right now.
Okay.
Not right now, but do we face that? That's what I want to know.
No. So, when I put the budget together, Ron, I funded the salary and wages so we could hire, superintendent's recommendation, which was 13 new people. When I put the budget together, I put together as quick as I could, but I anticipated the state, who just cannot seem to be able to put a budget together quicker than the last day of the, the month in, in June. So, I put that budget together not knowing what that number was gonna be from them. We still don't know what that is. So, when I talked to superintendent today and Mike, we're gonna take $400,000 and add that to the expense. So, you have enough to fund 13 new positions in your salary budget. But from what the superintendent says, there's not enough in expenses to pay for their benefits. That number comes to approximately $400,000. So, today, again, we appropriated $400,000 until we can find out exactly what's gonna happen, because I didn't, I, I thought from, based on what the state said-
I just don't want the school district, I don't want the superintendent or the school committee or the district to be told that we're overspending. That's my concern.
Did somebody tell them that they're overspending?
Well, the devil's in the detail. You just said that we're below, it's below $400,000 and it's gonna come from somewhere. Did I, did I not just hear that?
It's gonna come from somewhere.
But where's somewhere?
It's gonna come from the-
That's theory. I want facts. I don't want theories.
Okay. Well, while you're trying to figure out the theory, so there'll be $400,000 that'll go into expenses. It'll be at the next city council meeting, that'll be in expenses, that's enough to hire 13 people. And hopefully, I expected fully, based on what our legislators said, that we were gonna have the proper funding in place long before the end of the year. Everybody, Ron, is waiting to find out what's gonna happen with the budget. Every other city in town is waiting. So, I don't know any more than they do. We have representatives from the mass municipal, we have representatives from mass teachers, we have representatives from the mass superintendents, and they all have people at the state house trying to figure out exactly what's going on and nobody has a pulse or an understanding. So, that should take care of that delta, that should take care of that difference. So, you can go ahead and hire those, those people, you know, whatever those positions were. It was a guidance council area, whatever they might be, so that should take care of that. And we just have to wait until the state, you know, it's hard to do a budget when you don't know what the, you know, the state is gonna give you in fund, could be less. I doubt it. We expect it to be more, but we don't know how much more. So, that'll give us the latitude that we need to move forward.
Anybody else have any comments before we move on?
Well, I just want to say the stock market's up this year.
It wasn't all year.
It's a year and a half.
No. I don't know what stocks are looking at.
The trend is 11 percent, Dean. I'm in that business.
No. Well, it wa, I don't know where you were the first half of the year, but it wasn't always that way.
No, but I just said, year and a half, the year and a half performance is 11 percent right now.
Look at the first half of the issue.
No, I, I, yeah, but-
Wasn't great.
But it's-
And we anticipated, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say you have a million dollars, transfer it out now and then it comes in short. Now who's in trouble?
But I think the state revenues were up as well.
Listen, the state legislature has no reason for not having a budget to us right now. Do you realize they pat, the chapter, we got our chapter 90 money for paving. We got a letter in, in February. We still can't spend the money to block, pave streets. Why? Because they haven't appropriated the money. So, we got a letter saying, yeah, you're gonna have this money. So, it's in their hands at this point. So, that should take care of it. I think the superintendent was worried about, well, I don't want to go out and start hiring these people if we don't have the money, although we're pretty sure we're gonna get more money, but who wants to speculate on that? I don't blame him. So, to fill that gap, to provide that safety net, we'll appropriate to the city council another $400,000, which gives you the ability to move forward. Hopefully, they adopt the, you know, the senate version because that, that's really Hopefully, they adopt the Senate version, because that's really generous to us, and that's the way it ought to really be.
And anything else under new and old business?
And just for the record, I think if you look at all, most of the schools, our size are a little bit lower and larger, developed basically a static budget, a maintenance budget based on last year. So basically, they did what they did last year. And I think some of that is, they just didn't want to put themselves out on the hook and not know how much money they were going to have. So they just developed that static budget, which was just a maintenance budget, you know, based on what they did last year. And of course, there's an increase in cost, just, it's not the same as it was last year. We had increased cost everywhere. So that seems to be what, you know, their approach was. But, again, without numbers, nobody knows how, you know, for days, so things could change. And hopefully, they will. I mean, hopefully, hopefully, the, you know, the Senate budget gets adopted. Man, with the extra funds they took in from last year, they should have no reason not to.
Okay. We'll move on. At this point, do we have contract negotiations?
Under new and old business, we need to set a date for our first meeting in August.
Thank you very much for reminding me. And I think we talked about August...
19.
19.
It always will on vacation.
It always is, yeah. All right, so that's in there, and we should plan on that. We will have a meeting, of course, on the 27th, so, you know, if we ever do a meeting, we certainly can reach out. But hopefully, things will be quiet for the summer, and we'll get together in August.
The vibe's quiet.
Who called out?
Yeah. You're perfect.
And for who?
So, anything else under new and old business? So then, we have executive session?
Oh, one last thing. We need an answer on the Lancaster Street school building. So, later through the summer, we can develop some ideas as to whether we can, whether we want to use it or not. I just don't want to keep the building for another winter and pipe springs and-
You brought up something. I was going to make a phone call to you. What's happening at Lincoln School?